Now we have to start on.
I don't know, maybe Joe's not coming. All right, I don't know if Joe's coming or not, so go ahead.
Okay, I'll start the meeting at six thirty. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, Angela, we'll go roll call for commissioners.
Commissioner Journey.
Present.
Commissioner Wood.
Present.
Commissioner Melcher.
Here.
Commissioner Walthius.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
And Commissioner Graybell. We have a quorum.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, he's here.
Welcome, Joe. All right, so we will move on to our public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on topics that are not listed on the agenda. We don't have any today, so we will move on to the approval of our meeting minutes for our meeting on November seventh.
Moved as presented.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Then the meeting minutes are approved. All right, we're moving on to our public hearing portion. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land, land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. I should probably open that hearing. I'll go ahead and open. Let's see, what is it? SD twenty-four dash zero two at six thirty-two. And then we'll move on to our declarations. Does anybody have any personal bias?
No.
No.
No, I have none. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
And I have none. Any ex parte information?
No.
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 And I have none. Angela, we'll go to you for the staff report.
All right, thank you, commissioners. First of all, I want to apologize for the formatting issues. I had some spacing and number issues and every time I tried to correct it, it would go back, so I gave up, so I apologize for that. I also would like to real quickly, if you haven't met him yet, this is Levi Gideon. He is our engineering technician in the Building and Planning Department, so he, I asked him to come, uh, help me out today, so. Thanks for being here, Levi. The applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately one million one hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-one square foot to twenty-seven point five-two acre property into five lots plus a remainder lot. The first phase is intended to prepare the new lots to be developed to be developed with housing in line with the allowed densities of the medium density residential zone. The subject property is located at four nine zero one Highway twenty and is identified on the Lynn County Tax Assessor's Map S thirteen S zero one E twenty-seven C, tax lot twenty-five hundred. Lot sizes would range in size from nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet to twenty-six thousand eight hundred and six square feet. The remainder lot shall be approximately one million two hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and twelve square feet per their sheet C nine. All lots would be eligible to be developed within the permitted uses in the residential medium density R two zone per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen twelve zero two zero. And just as a point of clarification, the commissioners will not be approving the shadow plat shown on the remainder lot. So that is, you are, we are just looking at the five lots with the road infrastructure. So per our code, they are required to provide the shadow lot. So per seventeen one one zero zero four zero B three D, it states if any portion of the property is not proposed to be included in the subdivision or any public dedication, that portion shall be identified as a remnant parcel. In this case, they're calling it a remainder, which, so it's the same thing. A draft subdivision or development plan shall be included showing how the proposed subdivision will be, will provide needed access and utilities to serve future development of the remnant parcel. The remnant draft is not included in the subdivision, so I just want to make sure that you're all clear that it's just the five lots and just the road. The rest of it is just possible future, what they could do in the future. So it's just a requirement of ours that they do that. So based on the review of the FEMA flood insurance rate map, panel four one zero four three C zero nine one eight G, dated September twenty-ninth, twenty-ten, the subject properties are not in the special flood hazard area. The subject property does show local wetlands waterways on the property. Wiley Creek abuts the far east boundary of the subject property listed on the Sweet Home Wetlands inventory map as WC dash three A. The Sweet Home GIS wetland layer shows a significant wetland in the Wiley Creek basin. The Sweet Home GIS floodway layer shows a hundred-year floodway approximately two hundred feet across Wiley Creek, approximately one hundred feet from center stream on each side. The Sweet Home GIS overlay layer shows the subject property is in the natural resource overlay zone and subject to the requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point two eight. The property has an active wetland delineation on it, DSL file WD two zero two two dash zero five four eight, which expires four ten twenty-eight. Based on the DSL review of the submitted site plans, this phase of the proposed construction may have impacts to wetland three. However, if impacts to wetlands are avoided in this phase, the design appears to lock in a construction design that will lead to direct impacts of wetlands and waters in the future phase. Ultimately, the overall project may require permit application for wetland removal and fill. The subject property has direct access from Mountain First Street and emergency access to Highway twenty via a future easement. City water sewer are available Mountain First Street and Highway twenty. Mountain First Street will be extended and connect to Street A. Street A shall be renamed prior to development. The proposed subdivision is on residential medium density. The density regulations for residential development for single-family manufactured homes and duplexes are no more than one residential structure per lot on or parcel, other than unapproved residential accessory dwelling. Density for other residential development is a maximum of twelve point zero dwelling units per net acre. Duplexes shall count as one dwelling unit for purposes of density calculations. The minimum lot area for a single-family dwelling manufactured home or duplex is five thousand square feet. The minimum lot area for an unattached, pardon me, for an attached dwelling is two thousand square feet. The minimum lot area for a multifamily is two thousand five hundred square feet per unit. The minimum width at building line on a corner lot is seventy feet. The minimum width at building line on an interior lot is sixty feet. And the minimum width at building line for an attached dwelling is twenty-five feet. Tax lot twenty-five hundred is approximately twenty-seven point five-two acres and the maximum density allowed shall be three hundred and twenty-four dwelling units. The applicant is proposing a subdivision consisting of five lots plus one remainder lot. Lot sizes would range in size from nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet to twenty-six thousand eight hundred and six square feet. The lot width at building line varies between lots, however, staff recommends a condition of approval that lot width at building line be no less than the requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one two point zero six zero. Boundary measurements are not shown on the preliminary plat. Sheet C nine, however, based on the submitted site plans and according to the applicant's narrative, the depth of the proposed lot shall not be three times greater than the width. Staff recommends a condition of approval that applicant provide all boundary measurements on the final plat. The proposed lot sizes provide adequate building sites for single-family dwellings, duplexes, and multifamily. Based on the submitted site plans, the applicant has proposed a local street width of fifty feet. Staff finds that the length, width, and shape of the block provide adequate building sites and the applicant considered safe pedestrian and bicycle traffic, convenient access, and traffic circulation. There are no existing buildings nor development proposed with this application. Building setback requirements will be reviewed during the development phase. Based on the submitted site plans, the length of the subdivision block along Mountain First Street as measured from the scale provided on sheet C nine is approximately plus or minus five hundred feet. The proposed length is similar and in some cases shorter in length than blocks in the surrounding neighborhoods. The proposed site plan shows that all lots have, shall have either direct access to Mountain First Street or Street A. As depicted on the proposed site plans, the proposed parcels would have sidelines that are at or very close to right angles to the public street. The attached site plan indicates a fifty-foot right-of-way with curb and sidewalk along Mountain First Street and A Street. Street connectivity on the subject property is limited to Mountain First Street. Cul-de-sacs on each end of Street A shall allow for a neighborhood and emergency vehicle turnaround. Staff recommends a condition of approval that the cul-de-sacs be designed to the fire apparatus access road standards provided as attachment E, which is the Oregon Fire Code Appendix D, figure D one zero three point one. Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point seven two zero four zero local street standards are as follows. Fifty-foot maximum right-of-way width, thirty-six-foot maximum curb-to-curb width, seven-foot minimum travel lane width, two lanes maximum, seven-foot parking width, a six-inch curb width, three-foot minimum planting strip width, and a five-foot minimum sidewalk width. Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four two zero four zero local street standards show a minimum required bike lane is seven feet. However, this is a topographical error that will be amended in future code amendment. Staff finds that on-street bicycle improvements matching surrounding neighborhoods is adequate. No reserved strips are required for this proposed subdivision. The northern cul-de-sac shows a twenty-four-foot wide easement leading to a storm retention basin and Highway twenty. The proposed subdivision block is plus or minus five hundred feet. Staff finds that the proposed public access provides safe, efficient, and direct connection to Mountain First Street. Per the Public Works Engineering comments in section two, Public Works will need to see more information on the tie-in location for the force main coming from the proposed lift station. Gravity sewer main inside subdivisions are recommended to be eight-inch PVC D three zero three four material with no less than point four percent of slope on any run and cut in Y-fitting connections for all lateral service lines. Eight-inch PVC dash C nine hundred water line with saddle taps for all service lines will be required with a fire hydrant needed in the northwest cul-de-sac due to distance from any existing or proposed hydrants as well as proximity to the proposed lift station. Attachment B C, sheet C eight shows the preliminary utility plan. Staff recommends a condition of approval that all utilities, access and utility easements be shown on the final plat. Streetlights will need to be installed at appropriate locations. All new streetlights and subdivisions shall be a minimum, shall be aluminum material with an anchor pair. The light fixture itself shall be an LED luminaire and shall conform to the Oregon PUC rules. And now I would like to address the comment that you received from Mr. Blomberg. Comments, which was included as part of your packet. Mr. Blomberg's concerns regarding habitat runoff, wetland, and watershed impacts shall be addressed through the permitting process. Under the conditions of approval, staff have recommended that the applicant comply with all federal, state, and local regulations. This includes but is not limited to DEQ, DSL, City of Sweet Home, et cetera. Development should not be permitted without regulatory agency approval. The applicant has completed and included in the supplemental packet the wetland delineation information, geotechnical report, and the stormwater management report. Conclusions and recommendations based on the findings discussed in section three. Staff recommends that the application be approved. The application shall be subject to compliance with the conditions listed as required by the findings of fact presented in the review criteria in section three. Any modifications to the conditions listed would require approval in accordance with provisions of law. For example, variance subsequent land use application, et cetera. If the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that the condition of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings in the review and design criteria in section three. And as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the land board use of appeals may only be based on review and decision criteria listed above. Recommended conditions of approval. Number one, the final configuration of the proposed lot shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. The applicant shall subdivide an approximately one million one hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-one square foot property into five lots plus a remainder. The subject properties are identified on the Lynn County Tax Assessor's Map S thirteen S zero one E twenty-seven C, tax lot twenty-five hundred. Lot sizes would range in size from nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet to twenty-six thousand eight hundred and six square feet. All lots would be eligible to be developed with the permanent permitted uses in the residential medium density zone R two, which is Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one two point zero two zero. Number two, the applicant shall rename Street A prior to the development and install a street name sign at the intersection of Mountain First Street and Street A. The applicant, number three, the applicant shall include all parcel boundary measurements on the final plat. Number four, the applicant shall include all access and utility easements on the final plat. Number five, the applicant shall comply with all requirements identified by the City Engineering and Public Works Engineering Department. Number six, the applicant shall comply with all storm drainage and grading requirements on Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four six and/or applicable requirements at the time of development. Number seven, the applicant shall comply with all utility lines and facility requirements on Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four eight and all and/or applicable requirements at the time of development. Number eight, the applicant shall comply with all street standard requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four two and/or applicable requirements at the time of development. Number nine, the applicant shall comply with the natural resource overlay requirements in chapter Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point two eight and/or applicable requirements at the time of development. Number ten, the new property line shall be situated so all buildings and structures comply with the yard setback requirements of the medium density R two zone per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one two and/or applicable requirements at the time of development. In addition to the engineering design standards improvement installed by a developer for any land decision, either as a requirement of these regulations or the developer's option, shall conform to the requirements of this development code. The improvement standards and specifications adopted by the city and shall be installed in accordance with the following procedures. A, city approval required. Improvement work shall not commence until plans are approved by the city. All plans shall be prepared in accordance with the requirements of the city. B, notification improvement work shall not commence until the city has been notified in advance and if work has been discontinued for any reason, it shall not be resumed until the city has been notified. C, inspections, inspections. Improvements shall be constructed under the inspection and to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director or Designee. The city may require changes in typical street sections and improvements if unusual conditions arise during construction to warrant such changes. D, installation of utilities. All underground utilities, sanitary sewer, and storm drains installed by the developer shall be constructed prior to the surfacing of the streets. Stubbs for service connections for underground utilities and sanitary sewer shall be placed to a length eliminating the necessity for disturbing the street improvements when service connections are made. E, as-built drawings. A map or plan showing all public improvement as-built shall be filed with the Department of Public Works upon completion of the improvements per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point five eight point zero seven zero. Number twelve, within two years of the final decision, a final approved plat or first phase shall be recorded with the county. If the first phase final plat is not recorded within two years, the preliminary approval shall lapse and a new application shall be required. All phases of an approved plat shall be recorded within ten years of the final date of decision per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one one zero point zero eight zero A. Thirteen, effective date for final plat approval. The approval process for a development shall become final upon the recording of the approved final plat together with any required documents with the county. Approved final plats shall become void one year after the final city approval if they are not recorded per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one one zero point zero eight zero G. Fourteen, the applicant shall obtain all applicable development permits, which include but are not limited to public works permits, development permits, including building permits and erosion control permits. The applicant shall obtain a twelve-hundred C stormwater permit from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and any Department of State lands permits as applicable. And as shown, our engineering department would like to add one more condition of approval coming straight from our soon-to-be-adopted master, storm master plan. So the additional condition is the applicant shall maintain runoff rate from development land equal to peak runoff from ten-year storm on undeveloped land, provide storage resulting from the difference between the ten-year release rate and the ten-year storm runoff development, and show calculations used to determine show runoff rates post and pre-development. So Planning Commission action and taking action on a subdivision, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. The decision on the application must be based on the applicable review and decision criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommending conditions are included in section four. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission decide on this matter be subject to a twelve-day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is mailed. After the Planning Commission makes the decision, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide an official list of conditions, if any, that applied to the approval if the application is approved. After opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission options include the following. Move to approve application SD twenty-four dash zero two, including the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Move to deny application SD twenty-four dash zero two, including adopting the findings of fact, the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize the decision. Move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or other. Do you have any questions of staff?
I have a question on condition number eleven. B, under notification. This is on page sixteen. The city has been notified in advance. Is there a timeframe about advance? How much in advance, a day, a week, a month?
Well, improvement work, that's normally our infrastructure improvement work. They usually have to do that. They come in and get the applications, though, like right-of-way improvement ahead of time before even development starts.
Okay, I just didn't want to leave that as sort of vague advance, like what does that mean?
And I will tell you, this is language actually in the code is where it comes from, so.
Yeah, and then just again with a little bit of the vagueness in number fourteen. The last line. Obtaining the stormwater permit and any Department of Lands permits as applicable. So is there someone in the engineering department who oversees that those permits will be?
So the twelve, twelve-hundred C, I, I approve those, so they send those to me. And then Department of State lands, that would be anything like flood plains permits, that type of thing. So we determine, once their plan gets done, it gets sent to DSL. That's who gives us the wetland delineation
Right.
information. And so once they get their plan, we go through and check off those boxes. So it's between the different employees of which parts of it we take care of, so.
Okay.
We won't issue our erosion control plant until they present the DEQ twelve-hundred C permit.
Okay.
And what that does is it keeps sediment and everything from flowing into Wiley Creek and all that because with the topographical challenges here, that would be pretty important.
Thank you.
Is the pump station going to be under the jurisdiction of the city or the developer?
You'll have to probably ask them. I don't know.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions, staff?
No.
Okay, then we will move on to our testimony. Our applicant's testimony is first, and I believe they are online and with us.
If you guys will all just introduce yourselves and then you guys can get started and Adam will put up your presentation as soon as you let him know when to do that.
Sure, okay. My name is Brittany Randall with Brand Land Use.
Jeremy Schoenfelder with Mosaic Development, applicant.
Kim Johnson with Seven Oaks Engineering, we're the civil engineer.
I'm James Nithing with Mosaic Development.
And that's our whole team tonight.
Thank you all for coming.
Okay, do you want me to share my presentation on this side? Would that be easier? Or do you guys want to put it up?
Whatever's easiest for you, Brittany. I have it ready. If you want me to do it on my end, if you want to share your screen, we can. However, if you share your screen, it's going to be a lot smaller.
Okay.
It's split screen.
Okay, I'm happy to have you put it up, so it's a little bit bigger. I was going to ask everyone to look at the, the plan in front of them because that'll probably be easier anyway, so however you want to do it, whatever's easier.
Brittany, I also made copies of your presentation for the planning commissioners, just in case, so they have physical copies of it also.
Awesome, thank you, thank you. Okay, so I'll just go ahead and get started here on our introduction slide. So good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Like we said, my name is Brittany Randall of Brand Land Use. We are representing the owner and applicant for the subdivision request. And I just need to give a huge thank you to Angela. That presentation was super comprehensive. I crossed out two pages of things I was going to say because you did it better than I could have, so thank you so much for that. And we also have Kim with us and Jeremy with us, and then we wanted to share who our geotechnical engineer was for this project. I think I also have teams, so I think I can. Okay, perfect, thank you. And so I'll briefly highlight how we believe our proposal meets the technical standards and complies with the city's development code. And so first, we wanted to take a look at the aerial image of our subject site. As we know, we're just south of Saniam Highway. We're bound to the east by Wiley Creek. Mountain First Street is stubbed to the west, and then we're bound on the south by the city's UGB. The site is twenty-seven point five-two acres in size and zoned R two medium density residential and falls within the natural resources overlay zone. Thank you. So this is an image of the preliminary plat, which is included in your application's submittal found on page forty-three of that full package that we presented to the city. And it might be helpful to have that in front of you as we kind of walk through some of this information. So like Angela said in her presentation, our proposal is to subdivide the twenty-seven point five-two acre property into five lots. We presented a plan that ranges in size from nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet to twenty-six thousand eight hundred and six square feet with a large remainder lot, which would be reserved for future development. As Angela also said, the lots comply with the minimum dimensional requirements of the medium density residential zoning district mandating a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet for single-family residences and twenty-five hundred square feet per unit for multifamily developments. I wanted to, this is a perfect site, thank you. I wanted to touch on the fact that we have reviewed the public comment provided to the city regarding the natural resources on the site and share that we are sensitive to the environmental features on this property, including the proximity to Wiley Creek and the designated natural resources overlay zone that the city has applied to the site. Our design respects the fifty-foot riparian setback required under the Oregon Safe Harbor methodology for goal five. We've shown that on our site plans to demonstrate that we will not be encroaching into this setback or buffer zone. And while this phase does avoid direct wetland impacts, we do understand that future phases might require these additional permits from the Oregon Department of State lands for any fill or removal activities. And I can assure you, the owner of this property is not unfamiliar with difficulties like this, so they know how to obtain the appropriate permits in order to develop in compliance with state and local guidelines. And so, let's see, so the future development, the remainder lot is obviously going to be reserved for future development. And we believe that our subdivision layout ensures that the remainder area is accessible and serviceable with the utilities and the roads already being in place, which will allow for efficient. I don't know if you could hear that, but there was some sirens outside. Which will allow for efficient future development consistent with city standards. So we wouldn't have to like tear up streets to extend in the future or further divide, so it'll be prepared for that. And then we are in agreement with the staff's recommended conditions of approval, including the new one that Angela read to you this evening. We do, however, realize that we made an error on lot three. In the future, for lots one through five, we are proposing a fourplex development similar to the development right next door. And we are hoping for a way that we could codify that in the conditions, whether it be a new condition that says that the applicant shall revise the first phase final plat, ensuring lots one through five are a minimum of ten thousand square feet to accommodate future fourplex dwellings. Or we could revise, propose to revise condition one to say that the lot sizes shall be between ten thousand and then our largest, just to ensure that. The only thing we're seeking is a little bit of flexibility to correct our error in that, in that sense.
And Brittany, just for a little more, so there is, there's the one.
the, there's the one lot that is kind of projected or whatever to not be a full fourplex. So we wouldn't technically be saying all lots 1 through 5. It's really the one, I think it's Lot 3 that you mentioned.
Lot 3.
Just under 10,000 square feet is the one.
Yeah, it's like just over 200 feet short.
Yeah.
And so that that was an oversight on our team's part. And so we're we understand that Condition 1 says that shall substantially conform. And and we believe that an additional 200 plus square feet does substantially conform. And if you all agree with that too, then I guess we don't need any revisions. But if you want to codify it, we are just making two suggestions on how we could do that. So then I would want to close by saying that this subdivision has been carefully planned to accommodate medium density residential development now and in future phases. And we believe it provides needed housing opportunities while ensuring infrastructure access to environmental resources are adequately addressed. So with that, we thank you for your time, and we do have our property owner and our civil engineer present. If you have any technical or specific questions, we are here to answer those for you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for our applicant?
Is is Mountain Fur going to be the only entrance to this development? Or in the future, are there plans to have another entrance somewhere else?
That is the plan for now, to have Mountain Fur. Its terminus would be into our newly proposed Street A with two cul-de-sacs on either side. And the reason that you see this layout is because of our boundary by the creek, the highway, and the city's urban growth boundary. So we felt like this was the best way to still serve all of the lots and accommodate circulation the way that the code aims to, while still respecting the fact that we're sort of bound on all sides by existing development and then these other features.
I see a off the north side of Street A, like a little, maybe a street that goes to the highway? Kind of jogs a little bit?
Yeah, so correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but that's an emergency access only.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And to clarify your condition for Lot 3, would amending that condition for lot sizes would range inside size from a minimum 10,000? Is that what you're requesting?
Yeah, that would, that would solve it. I think provide that we can go ahead and amend that in our final plat, as long as Angela agrees with that.
Yeah, and
Sorry, Jeremy, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, so from a, from a technical perspective, I just want to make sure that I'm relaying the the theory and thought here is we, we would be okay if Lot 3 was not a fourplex, because we could make that. And and I think we're playing with our plans and specificity to really know what goes there yet. And so, so what we wanted to do is prior to recording the actual plat, if we need to amend something so that there's an acreage that allows that to be a fourplex, that we can still move that line a little bit. That's really what what we're wanting some understanding of, just as Brittany said, to kind of correct that, because we we haven't completely dialed in what that floor plan is. It may not be a full fourplex, in which case what we're talking about is almost irrelevant. But but if we do try to get a fourplex in there, then then we would need to change the lot lines a little bit to maybe make that work. That's, that's really where we're coming from on it.
My recommendation for the planning commissioners is a couple hundred feet is still pretty much, is substantially conforms to it. And especially since they're not going under that, they're wanting it to be 10,000. So I don't think we need to amend, but that is up to you guys, whether you want it to be more specific or not. They are within that range of, you know, a few hundred feet is not going to be substantially. It's within that range, in my opinion. So, but it's up to you if you all want that to be more specific. I just don't want them to have to come back to us for anything else. If they don't need to.
And isn't a modification rule of thumb about 10%? And this would be well below 10%?
Correct. Thank you.
In the in the lower southwest corner of the unfinished property, the remainder, that's just an estimated access with a little cul-de-sac there. Is there any? Well, are there any true plans for that? Or that is just to find just basically an access to that hillside?
Yeah, so, so oh, I was just
No, go ahead, Jeremy.
Brittany, but so, so the the first part of that is all these other lines that you're seeing on this from a lot perspective are purely conceptual. We have not gone deep into exactly what this looks like. So, so that really was just purely thinking about, okay, I don't know if you're familiar with this site enough topographically, but there's a very big hill there.
Oh, yes.
That makes it hard to have any, any interconnectivity from that extreme southwest side to the main Street A that you're seeing in this, in this depiction. And so this was really just us drawing lines that if we, at some point, thought we wanted to get some lots there, is there any way to do it? But but again, as for the purposes of this particular hearing, we aren't even talking about those lines. We don't even know what we're doing there yet. This is just us, very high level, you know, putting lines on a piece of paper without being able to really dig into it from a topographic and access perspective on all of that other stuff besides these lots we're talking about today.
Sure, absolutely. The second question on the emergency access only from the north cul-de-sac out to Main Street. That would be, or are you planning to allow that to be a a public pathway? Perhaps for circulation to Main Street? If even as a proposal for the unfinished spaces, which makes sense, of course, between the north end of that cul-de-sac and Main Street to the west of that emergency access is a large undefined space just beyond the wetlands? Have you entertained or considered options for a possible city park in that area or the pathways to Main Street for pedestrian circulation? Or done anything along those lines? Or it's basically blocked off to emergency vehicles only?
So there's, there's kind of two things with, with what you're saying. That particular, I'll call it, you know, 24-foot wide easement is, is really more contemplated, contemplated for emergency vehicular access as opposed to anything else. However, there is a greater, you may be aware, a greater walking path, right, that's that exists and kind of comes through this property that we would be going in and tying that in at, at our, at the borders of our property and taking it through. And then we've talked with the city. We don't have anything put together, but we've talked with staff about, about having a city park somewhere in this. It could be at the location that you talked about, but the first place that we really talked about was more along what we think the city paths will be changed to, to which is on the north end of where our cul-de-sac is. Kind of on the very east side of that, where, where, right now, you're seeing kind of lots depicted there. But at one point, we talked about, about maybe getting a city park in there, but it's just very preliminary conversations. We are looking at doing that, but we haven't defined a location yet.
Right, that would come in the future development or stage.
Right.
Okay. Oh, and the last question, well, possibly. The pump station, is that planned to be a city-owned and operated and jurisdiction pump station, or is that going to be Mosaics?
You know, we haven't gotten into the detail with that. I would say just off the cuff that, that we would look at the city controlling it, simply because the entire there's nuances about having public access to utilities to serve the entire place, and that would be part of that public, public facility. So I don't know that we could even do it from a private perspective and hit that requirement to have all those be individual lots. So that's where I'm coming from when I say that, but we haven't had any in-depth conversations about who truly would, would own that long term.
Okay, thank you.
Is there in regard to a future access from Main Street? Could you just point out where that might be?
I don't know the best way to
Here, I'll, I can walk over there and show him. Hold on.
Okay.
And assuming that does line up with that existing driveway on Main Street?
Correct.
Okay.
These first five, they're going to be fourplexes. Is there going to be an HOA? How do you, how do you handle taking care of the landscaping?
So, so actually, the intent of these first is actually to expand our if you're aware, I'm not sure. We actually own the assisted living and independent cottages immediately adjacent to this. And so the actual intent of these first five is just to expand the number of cottages that we have. So we would actually, you know, deal with the landscaping the same way that we do onsite on those. So there wouldn't be an HOA associated with this particular development. It would just be owner maintained. And we kind of anticipate that's the way it would be for every lot going forward in the future. We don't really anticipate creating an HOA here at this point. But as far as these particular lots, it would be maintained by you know, it would have common ownership with our adjacent property likely. So we would just maintain it as owners.
And your existing cottages seem to be very well-maintained, that neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's very nice little neighborhood.
We have been very happy to become a part of Sweet Home. We, we've, we've felt that we've really helped that community, you know, and I, I think you all know, we just opened that memory care. It seemed to have gotten, you know, great reception. And and obviously, there seems to be a need there because it filled up so quickly. So, so this is just us continuing to what we feel is fulfill a need.
I have a question for our staff here. Is Mountain Fur a public or is it still the private street? Has that ever trans, has that transition ever happened yet?
It's still a private street right now.
Okay.
I believe it doesn't quite meet our street standards due to lacking a sidewalk on one side.
Right.
However, I was reminded today that once this development starts, there is an agreement to finish the sidewalks on Mountain Fur, at which point that will all, that will all get triggered to be done. So all the what is it on the south side?
Yes.
Remember, yeah. I'm looking at you because you were there. I shouldn't. You're not in that role anymore. But yes, so that will be triggered to have the full street, so.
Okay, and the long-term goal for this development and the extension of Mountain Fur is that it be a public street? Once the rest of it gets absorbed into the network? Okay, and Street A?
Yeah, and, and, and for the, for the same, for the same reason that I mentioned about the lift station as well. So you, you have to have public access available to have multiple lots. And so, so that's why it would be a public street.
Good.
I guess I just have one remaining, one question, because my other commissioners asked all my questions about Street A and connecting to Main Street. My question is, is there any possibility, or are you planning on putting any sort of speed dampening things on Street A? Right away, there isn't a lot of development around it, and it does become a very straight area of street that's kind of hidden from Main Street and may bring people over to that who might want to use that street where there's not a lot of development to drive fast or wild, or, you know, this is just a street that's kind of hidden from everything and is in a quieter part of town. That's my only thought, because it's just this street to nowhere. Back tucked into the trees back there.
So, so we haven't, we haven't looked into it deeply enough to, to see or really contemplate if there is any you know, true concern about, about speeding through there. As you mentioned, it is kind of tucked away, and you drive through the rest of our development to get there. We haven't noticed any issues on our development thus far. But obviously, with the population that we generally serve, we would pay attention to that. And so if we do think that that, that would become something, it's very easy for us to deal with putting, you know, speed humps in there or some kind of speed control or something. But, but to, to, you know, thus far, we haven't really looked at doing that. It's just something we would monitor, you know, as it develops out.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? I'm done. All right. Thank you so much for your testimony and answering our questions. We're gonna move on now to any proponent testimony. That's testimony from those wishing to speak in favor of the application. Next, I want to move on to then our opponent's testimony, and that's anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the application. Do we have any neutral testimony from those who are neither in favor nor opposed to the application? All right, then I will go ahead and close our public hearing at 7:16 and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. I could see the reason behind wanting to develop this piece of land, especially since the recent development the hospital and memory care and all of that there.
It is a great opportunity to provide some independent living.
It's not my favorite design. I'm, I, makes me happy to hear that, that would complete the Mountain First Street. But Street A just looks like it doesn't fit, but I understand it's the only way to give access to these future properties with the topographical concerns.
Yeah.
It's just a very strange street.
I'm feeling satisfied with the applicant's comments regarding the concerns about the riparian and the wetlands.
Yeah, and I feel like our conditions of approval cover that.
Yes, the new condition.
And I suspect that it would or was a difficult conversation to get an ODOT permission to have a street intersect on the highway there just past the bridge.
Right.
So basically, a cul-de-sac is nearly the only option. I'm sure there was a, a great reluctance on their part.
And Cher, if you, if I might, also, if you've ever driven out there, there's quite a hill coming from Highway 20, so just topographically, having an actual road there is could be problematic design-wise. So just, if you haven't gone out and looked at it, I would recommend it.
Will emergency service vehicles be able to travel that?
They'll be designed, Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, or Brittany, to be able to access in and out of there, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll have to talk with fire specifically and make sure that we design that access, you know, even though it's not a a road for public use, it'll have to accommodate their vehicles.
Yes.
And our fire chief, we usually get his sign off on most of that stuff. So even the cul-de-sac will, will get his sign off.
Okay.
Well, it seems like they've put a lot of thought and work into planning this out and meeting all the necessary criteria for.
It's an interesting proposal, and there are a lot It's an interesting proposal, and there are a lot of questions still to be answered, but I think. The conditions of approval have enough muscle to cover what we don't know.
Yeah, they'll still have to continue going through some pretty extensive permitting processes.
They're familiar with the area and what it looks like, and they've already developed near, so. I feel confident they're prepared to take on those challenges. Be good?
Yep.
All right.
Done.
All right, well, then I will go ahead and look for a motion.
I would uh, move to approve application SD twenty four dash zero two. Including the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report to also include the additional condition number fifteen. Adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report. The setting of the 12 day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff. To prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Then the motion passes.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. I'll touch base with you on Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Angela.
Yeah, thanks for having us. I just want to reiterate to everybody that, you know, we've been here since, been at Sweet Home since 2021 when we first acquired this. And we just appreciate the the help of staff there. They've been great with us as we've developed out. That memory care and everything, and and we just. Really uh, really appreciate the relationships that we that we've developed there. It's been it's been a great opportunity for us and I just appreciate everyone's help.
Thank you, Jeremy. We like hearing that.
Thank you.
Hello. Yeah.
All right. Staff updates, Angela?
All right, just uh, just some reminders of some things I talked about last time. December 5th is the Housing Production Strategy hearing for you guys. We will just go through the last bits of it. You've heard most of it, but we need um, approval from. Planning Commission to recommend to city council um, that night because they're back to back. The city council meeting is the Tuesday directly after. I will just have um, kind of an order for you guys to sign to recommend it. It won't be the minutes. So we can bring that to that. If um, any of you want to go to the. City council hearing, um, it will be December 10th, so just that Tuesday right after. Then December 11th, we have the Transportation System Plan um. PAC-TAC meeting, so the Technical and Public Advisory Committee meetings. And then December 19th, we will have a variance application connected to a partition. So.
Busy.
Every meeting we have something. So um, other than that, there we're just. Keeping our heads above water and it's about getting ready for the holidays and.
I won't be here for the fifth, but I I won't be here physically for the fifth, but I could. Zoom in if needed.
The regular meeting time, six thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, the consultants won't need, they won't be here. Um, it'll just, we'll just go through a review, have any, well, I haven't touched base with them or yet, but there wasn't really a need because we've already gone through it. Um, just to kind of go and have a formal hearing to adopt or for recommendation for adoption. So it's. We're just going to be going through the motions of that, so.
Are the two recent subdivisions that had been approved over on Live Oak and off Forty Third. They're planning still to start work next year? Or do you know?
I don't.
Any contact?
Don't know yet.
Okay.
So I know, let's see, Forty Third, is that down at Coulter Lane?
Yep.
That one?
Yeah.
So they are still working out um, some of the wetland. They still have a lot of the um. I think they were done with the delineation. I don't know. I haven't checked in with them, but that first phase they were gonna look at again.
Okay.
Um, I have not heard anything from them since. I, we haven't gotten any building, um. Well, I guess I should look at Levi and see if he's gotten any infrastructure.
I haven't seen anything at all.
They see stuff before I do, so um, just because of the road and the infrastructure. Uh, him and Blake see it before I do, so.
The the Live Oak one, uh, two duplexes have been constructed on the north end or north side of Live Oak, but the south side is still empty, and I haven't heard from the developers. So. Heard you mention that one, so I wanted to point that out. But as as far as foothills goes, uh, I believe Blake's been working to make sure like all the easements and all the utility sizing is appropriate and everything. So. We're still working with engineers on that.
Yeah, yeah, takes time.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a long time to get all of. Eyes dotted and the T's crossed to get one of those.
Yeah, a lot.
Yes.
Or is it just the very first step?
Yeah. Okay, now you can go.
Sometimes, sometimes you guys are the easiest step, believe it or not.
We're very okay, so get out there and build something.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, my apologies for showing up late and.
Apologize, thank you.
You know, I'm. Time is not always the same, so it's very difficult.
It is relative.
It is very relative.
Especially when you retire.
Are you retired?
I was gonna, I was gonna be late today too, so I'm glad I wasn't.
So confused. Are you, are you?
Uh, other than that, I don't have anything else. Um, there will be some more transportation system meetings after the first of the year, but I figure there's no point in me giving you that whole list yet, but.
Perhaps a discussion on roundabouts.
We had a discussion on our follow-up meeting about that, so.
Europe, I like them.
Yeah, so. Michael, Michael was listening in on the workshop meeting. He wasn't, so he's our ODOT representative. So he was listening in on the meeting um, that we had, so. Heard all the conversations about Pleasant Valley, so we had a convo. Sorry. Um. He, Michael was on the, our ODOT representative for the TSP, and you know, he's looking at different. Ways that it could be presented, you know, it's going to be how it. They're going to have to do some studies, um, so it's not going to be a simple fix of let's just slap in a roundabout, you know, there's gonna, because there's people that are really for them and really against them and. Kind of depends on where you fit, and that's with First Avenue there and um.
Good signage of how to use them and approach them. It's really what makes them effective.
Yeah, so so he heard the conversation. Yeah, he did hear the conversations, and so he is aware of that discussion, so.
Okay.
Awesome.
Good.
I sent two planning commission applications your way. Did they? Build them?
I haven't seen them yet, but they they go to.
What?
They go to um, the Assistant City Manager Pro Tem first, so I'll ask her tomorrow.
Okay. So I sent them the link and everything.
Okay.
And they both said, yes, I would love to.
Yay.
Cool. Good job. You're our new recruiter.
Mm-hmm.
Unofficial. Right? Then I will adjourn our meeting at seven twenty seven. Good job, everyone.
Thank you, you too. Good job.
Huge.
We took care of it. Very expediently tonight. Less than an hour.